Welcome to the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 Pembroke School Committee Meeting, the first meeting of our year. I'm calling this meeting to order at six o'clock, exactly. I'd like to welcome PAC 105, who's here with us today, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, do you want to go in here? I'm not the leader! This is not in the, this is not in the meeting!
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got the meeting, please!
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Can we stop the meeting with everybody?
All right, well, Kim says the meeting is starting now, so be it. Thanks, guys. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
So if anybody has any public comment, we should have a sign-in sheet somewhere. Feel free to, do we?
Yeah, I was going to say, second row over here.
If you're at home, you can email scinfo@pembrokek12.org. We're welcoming all the visitors. Welcome to PAC 105. We're glad you are here. And are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
All right. Communications, the warrants are being circulated. So consideration for approval, school committee meeting minutes of November 7th, November, in November 28th and December 12th. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, one of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and it's unanimous. One, two, three, that's it. Okay, next on the agenda is superintendent's report.
So in your packet, you have a copy of the Community Engagement Survey that Principal Banbury talked about with you all when he was here doing his school improvement plan. So anytime we are going to send a survey out to parents, it needs school committee approval first. The questions are pretty basic. I wasn't sure if there was anything you thought would be helpful for him to add or take away, but it's just to get an idea of, you know, how the school fits into the community here in North Pembroke and take some good, honest feedback and make some improvements in the future.
You know what, nothing else. This is the whole.
That's it, yeah. We like to keep it short, Patrick.
I like it.
People are more apt to fill it out.
So they would use their, the email list that we have for North Pembroke as well as their Facebook pages. Originally, we had talked about doing QR code at the conferences, but those have passed, but we can do it again in the spring too, when people are here for parent-teacher conferences, so.
Any other questions?
So do we need to approve it?
You do need to approve it.
Oh, we do, okay.
So move to approve the North Pembroke Elementary School Community Engagement Survey as presented.
Second, sorry, second.
It's been seconded, and all, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Somewhere in your ginormous packet, I think you have some winter sports participation numbers that Brian has shared. Can't find them quickly off the top of the packet, but they were in the electronic version that went out. So we have 286 winter athletes this year at the high school. That is an increase over last year by eight athletes. So we do have our percentage of athletes, of students participating in winter athletics is 2% higher than it has been in the past. So 41% of the high school enrollment is engaged in winter athletics. Previous years, it has been 38, 36, and 31%, so.
That's great.
I just want to say the track kids were killing it from what I saw.
Yeah, I think the girls hockey team had a great weekend with the Gormley Tournament. I think the boys bared pretty well. Basketball, the girls too, I saw some, it's not Twitter anymore, what is it? X photos posted over the weekend, so.
Are we going to have a couple of the teams in?
Yep, so the plan is to invite boys soccer into the next meeting, and there's another one that I just can't pick up off the top of my head that we're talking about. Oh, the cross-country students that are speaking in the state right now.
That's awesome. Both teams did a lot for the town, so I think it's good.
If you can see your numbers, you can see that wrestling has made a resurgence at Pembroke High School. We have 28 wrestlers, which is great. There have been years in the past where we've had a great group of students engaged in wrestling but weren't able to meet any, to win any meets because we didn't have enough weight classifications covered, but that is no longer the case. So 28, which is up from 16 last year, so that's a big increase for us in that.
I don't think we have a copy of it, but maybe just email it after the fact.
Yeah, I think it was, it might have been in your electronic version, but.
Yeah.
Erin, how are we for just equipment? I mean, I know a lot of times that's all on, it sure, it used to be on a rotating schedule.
Yep, so it's.
Are we up to date?
We are up to date, so we do have a uniform replacement cycle. Brian stays on top of that as far as consumables, for lack of a better word. Those are ordered for each season. Larger purchases like wrestling mats and that type of stuff have all been figured into the five-year purchasing plan, so.
I, you know, I'm just going to give a little bit of a plug for the programs, but these programs change kids' lives. I mean, this is, we've always had, I think, sitting around this table through multiple different committees, we've always had a philosophy about educating the whole child, right? And that means a lot of things, right? It's about what happens in the classroom, it's about what happens in clubs, it's about what happens in sports, but our program has changed lives for kids, right? Both from a scholarship perspective and a scholarship opportunity perspective, but also in a leadership, a growth, the teamwork, a discipline, a level of commitment. And I think it's, it's as important as what happens in the classroom are the things that we support around the classroom. And this is just a good example of that, my opinion.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
So we are excited about what the spring will bring as well. The next thing in my packet was just to kind of go over the budget presentation calendar with you all. So usually, this is the meeting where we're talking about maintenance of effort, but we've already done that. There is no new information to share as far as maintenance of effort. That won't come out until the latter part of January, so we'll start our department budget presentations with the first meeting in February. We'll do elementary and secondary budgets, then we'll do teaching and learning, student services, arts, technologies, facilities, and athletics. Those are the ones that we have traditionally always done. I wasn't sure if there was anything else you all were interested in seeing over the course of February and March.
Erin, I said much was the appropriate time, but I think we're going to see some change in the legislature. We should bring in Representative Cutler, drawing a blank on the woman who's Elanatra, Representative Elanatra, but I believe Senator Moran is not up for reelection.
She's not, she's not running.
Yeah, so I don't know, you know, I think we get the House side of budget and whatever, but hopefully she would come if we still invite her. I mean, she's.
I think she would, she indicated.
Okay.
I'd be surprised if she didn't.
Yeah, I hope she would, but that would be a bit of a wrinkle for us.
Yeah, when do you want to target having them in?
When would be a good ti, I mean, right now, everything's already done, so it would really be for next year, right?
Right, it would be for fiscal year '25.
So does it make sense, you know, I don't want to do it when it's really busy here, you know, like March, maybe?
I do think, the one thing to think about, right, is the governor's budget will come out in January, right? They'll be, they likely won't even have a budget by the time we go to town meeting, but I think any early indicators that we can get from them, so if it's March, it would be, I would do early March, so that we can, we have enough time to plan and react. So if the legislative team comes back and says, hey, I know the governor's budget said local aid was going up 3%, that may be, and we can still get a big fat zero, right? So I think making or getting our elected representatives, but not just on the record, but also tell us what you think is going to happen so we can plan for it, I think will be helpful.
Yeah, so early March, the first, the first week in March we'll do.
In there, the technology, is there, are we on a cycle for replacing Chromebooks?
Yep, yep. But that'll be, I can, Brandon will present that as part of his presentation.
So last year, when they were here to talk about budget, we heard that there was money everywhere, and the state was looking to give money away, basically. And I'm seeing every suburban town, school system is broke practically.
I don't know, what did they do with the money? I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know if that's a question that's right, that we'd ask them, but I mean, how can we move that? You know, I don't know, it's, how can we move the needle to get a little bit more support, possibly?
Right, and I think what we've seen, I can speak for myself, Mary Beth and Jess, is, you know, influx of one-time money. So, you know, they funded the acceleration academies, again, for the vacation weeks. We talked a little bit here about the one-time funds associated with the Department of Public Health grant. That doesn't fundamentally fix the issues with the Chapter 70 formula. It gives you like a good one-shot to do something new and different, but it doesn't fix the inherent issues that we have with the way the formula is currently working.
And the tough thing with the formula is it's skewed to serve, really, the towns or cities with the most students. So it's funny, it's hard to say that's wrong to do, but they're leaving out a good chunk of the state when they do it that way.
So I can say, I would be very comfortable saying it's wrong to do it, right, in the way that they do it, and I don't, I don't want to be confrontational about it, but I think there's two components as far as where state funding has been over the last couple of years, and some of it in what I do for a living, I've been living, right? There was so much federal one-time ARPA money, which by the way, a little editorial adds to why we're $33 trillion in debt, but it's, there was so much federal ARPA money that came in to the system that what you were talking about, Mike, you're right, right? It's like, and it had to be spent by a specific time.
Right.
Or it had to be returned to the federal government. So the Commonwealth, rightfully so, said, well, let's spend it and get some good out of it for our residents, our citizens, our kids, our, name the thing. But it's gone, right? And that money dried up, and that money is not coming back into the system. And at the same time, there were a bunch of announcements over the last few months about tax revenues being short, capital gains revenues being short, you know, because economically, things have slowed down, and, you know, inflation's eating things up, and you're not getting the gains with investments and everything else. And as a result of those dollars being lower, you know, things are beginning to tighten and fall back. The Chapter 70 funding, for 15 years, we've been asking our representatives to make inroads and make changes in the Chapter 70 funding, because it's not about how many kids either, it's disproportionate, right? If they gave every kid in the Commonwealth X amount of dollars per child, that would be one thing, right? But your, the Commonwealth is trying, this is my opinion solely, this is not fact, they are trying to engineer an outcome by making certain areas and localities within the Commonwealth preferential, and other areas are basically getting less as a result of that. And there's a million reasons, and there's a million pieces of spin, but, and it goes long before anything over the last couple of years. This is going back decades. The reality, though, is that suburban school districts like Pembroke, right? So you're not talking about Weston, not talking about Wellesley, not talking about Newton, you're talking about places like Pembroke, with regular people, mom and dad both work, doing the best that they can, get hammered, right? Whereas you have Boston, I'll never forget coming to a school committee meeting three or four years ago, well, okay, six or seven years ago, I guess now, where Boston said, no, it's no big deal, we're going to increase the size of the school day, and it's going to be $15 million, no big, it's a little bit of money.
Their budget this year, I've read, is either, in the Globe, has stated it's either 1.7 billion, 2.7 billion.
That's right, that's exactly right.
And 3 billion, I've heard, is different numbers for their budget this year.
And we're begging for $25,000 or $50,000. So the formula is awful, and the formula is completely unfair, and it has been. The reality is, there is not enough political capital with your suburban representatives that could change that or shift that, because the number of representatives in the House is based on population, and that's where it's going to go. So we can talk a lot about it, it's not going to, we're going to be still left holding the same issues back as if we just move on, I guess is probably the best way to put it.
Right, and there's a couple of places where the expense has vastly outgrown the formula, right? And so one of those areas is the cost of special education, and the other one is healthcare. And so the last time.
Transportation.
Yeah, the last time they made adjustments to the formula, though, we didn't see, I think that's the year that we got $100 a student. We did see more than we normally saw. It still wasn't, wasn't huge gains for us, was the year that they adjusted that. I would assume that we would see some sort of adjustment on the special education side moving forward only because of that huge increase that we talked about with Operational Services Division and the 14% increase in tuition. So they passed $75 million in supplemental aid for districts that met this ridiculous threshold for that increase in special education tuition. We don't meet the threshold, but there's got to be some kind of accounting for that moving into the next year.
But I do think when our representatives come, and this is where, this is where the tables turn a little bit, and we should always be professional, and we should always be respectful, and they work really hard, I'm sure of that, right? But we need to ask them those questions, right? We need to put some of those questions before our representatives and say, you represent us, right? Or you may represent Hanson, or you may represent Marshfield, or whatever area makes up your district. We need help, right? And how are you getting it for us, right? And that's, it can be uncomfortable, but to a certain extent, that's our job. And part of what I'm saying is, we're going to ask those questions, right? We're not trying to gotcha anybody, we're not trying to make anybody look bad. I think knowing that those are going to be the questions, or at least some of the questions I'm going to ask all of the representatives, I think it's good to come prepared, and not about at the state level, we've done this. I want to know at the Pembroke level, what we've done, and those are different.
So one of the things I'm going to suggest is that everybody sort of write down some proposed questions, and that we give it to them ahead of time, because what I do know is that Josh Cutler and Catherine Elanatra are not on any sort of an education committee. So they don't have, they don't, they don't really even have, I mean, they vote on it, of course, but they don't have as much influence, I don't think, or, you know, they don't, they don't, it's not what they care most about.
Don't have as much information as someone that would be on one of those committees.
Yeah, exactly. It's not at their fingertips, and so if we are proactive and we send over a list of questions, I think that would be helpful, and they can be pointed questions, but hopefully we can get some answers if we give them pointed questions ahead of time.
I think that's fine. I mean, I think anything that can make that a productive conversation, because what, what you hope for are strategies to get us maybe, you know, a little bit of money for whatever it is. Now, what Vinnie Dimasito used to say regularly when he would come is, tell me something tangible that I can help fund, that we can help go get money for, right? I think that's the other, is we should think about a couple of.
We might be able to think of one or two things.
Yeah, I think, I think we can come up with, but really, let's think of.
I'm sure we can come up with a few of those.
Yeah. And I'm grateful that we have a team here in Pembroke that often goes after these one-time funds, and is skilled at going after the funds and, you know, gets them.
And was smart with the ARPA money. I'll say, a lot of that was before I came on, but, you know, a lot of towns are struggling because they use that money not in the most intelligent way, let's say, and, you know, to start new programs that now they can't fund.
Right.
Because they got that one-time money and they don't have any, you know, so we, I think everyone here deserves credit for, you know, really planning ahead and using the money wisely.
Absolutely, so.
We still have some left to use, so it goes through September of 2024.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's good. All right, so on to the subcommittee liaison updates.
Yep, so EdSub met what feels like a lifetime ago, but it was only a couple of weeks, right? And we talked about the changes to the program of studies. I'm going to hand it over to Mary Beth in a second, but there's a couple of pieces to what we went through. So there's obviously, each year, we have some new course proposals that Mary Beth will go over with you all. Again, this is just us asking for your blessing to put them in the program of studies. We obviously only run courses that students select, so if students don't select the courses, then we're not, we're not looking to run them. The next piece is some updates to the pathways, kind of map that we've shared with you in the past. That is printed in the program of studies, and we've heard feedback from you all and from families around, you know, some improvements that you'd all like to see there, so I think we captured most of that in there. And then there are a couple of sweeping changes we would just like to make, so we'll go over those as well.
I think we should start with the new course proposals. Those are probably the easiest to wrap.
You're going to speak up.
Easiest to wrap our brain job, sorry about that. You can see on the cover sheet that I gave you, Brian, that has the red in it. I think you can find that. That's probably the easiest place to follow along. And on the backside of that first sheet has the new course proposals. There is a detailed course proposal in your packet as well, so there's both ways for you to look at it. We're proposing the next two courses for the pathways in engineering and the pathways in biomedical science. So our first two proposals are to bring in Principles of Engineering, which is the second course in the sequence, and Human Body Systems, which is the second course in the biomed sequence. I don't know if anyone has any questions about those particular things, but they fit the pathway, they are prescribed by Project Lead the Way, they do require training for teachers, they will require some purchase of materials. We do have some grant funding for that as well, so we can offset some of those costs through the grants.
So I just had a couple of questions. I, this probably just, you know, maybe you can just explain it. I was looking at the Human Body Systems course, the frameworks, and I'm just trying to understand, and we're talking about the human body, and it's talking about analyze a major global challenge, specify a design problem that can be improved. Like, how does that relate to, I don't know, how does that relate to Human Body Systems?
Do you want to go? You can go. There's a very simple example that we've seen at the eighth grade, and then they extrapolate that in the upper grades. So in the eighth grade, they design somebody for a student who has cerebral palsy, for example. So you're looking at human body systems and how you can augment performance, or how you can support performance that needs, you know, that needs something extra. So it's those kinds of things, but it's far more chemical by the time they're getting to this, this course, which is the second in the sequence. So it's more of a chemistry-based course and biology-based course than just, hey, here's some paper and tape, what would you do with this? So now they're going to go a little bit deeper and talk about maybe implants, or maybe other kinds of human body systems and how engineering can support that. So it kind of mixes a little bit with the engineering curriculum as well at times.
Right, so when we had the eighth grade, the woman that taught the course at the time, and we had students come, they were designing a prosthetic for somebody with a drop foot related to cerebral policy. So, I mean, just moving that up a few years, that's.
Okay.
And that would be the second thing on the next one, right, where it talks about complex real-world problems. So everything, I think, I had a similar question, actually, so I'm glad you asked it, right? Everything ranges back to the human body, right? I mean, this isn't going to be, we're going to talk about climate change for five weeks in a human body type of course, right? This is, it's about the body, the way the body functions.
It's more medically based, actually.
Medically based, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's more like, it's biological.
I get, that's, that's.
So that's where they're sticking to the, the science, but obviously, science interacts with the real world, so I'm just reminded that I just saw Oppenheimer. So just some of those ethical questions, this came up before in our EdSub meeting too, what are the moral dilemmas? Now, these courses are not, you know, designed to create nuclear energy necessarily, but those kinds of, like, if you can make it, should you still make it, even though you can make it?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
So that, those are the kinds of things that we're asking kids to grapple with on a very small level.
It's critical thinking, right, ultimately, that you're getting to.
Yes, and what's the potential? And, I mean, the most obvious one right now is AI, right? So if you have it, how can you use it? How can you use it responsibly? How, how do we integrate it? Because it's not going anywhere. So how are we going to use it in a way that's ethical?
I did not remove human interaction just because you have it, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
And then the other question I had was, you know, how do you pick the curriculum that goes along with this? And did you pick a curriculum yet?
For Project Lead the Way?
For this particular course?
For Principles of Engineering? That comes straight from Project Lead the Way. So Project Lead the Way is a well-respected national science organization that focuses on higher-level thinking for students, and their approach is very project-based, and they are, they also want to be inclusive of, you know, all learners. They don't want just an honors program for kids that are going to MIT or to, you know, a high-level engineering school. They want all kids to be exposed to these principles and concepts because they feel that it's so important. It's an excellent organization. They're who we get our grant money from as well, but it's tied to the Massachusetts framework. So they use the frameworks to develop the curriculum, that then they teach our teachers how to, how to explain to students. Their pedagogy is where most pedagogy is going today in terms of education, which is more about give kids a problem, how do they solve it, instead of watch me do the problem, now you do the problem, now, you know. So it's more about, here's the issue, what do you know already, and how can you get at the problem? What can you show us that you know? And then what can I, as the facilitator, coach, teacher, help you to move your thinking along? So it's, it requires quite a bit of teacher training for that kind of classroom to run and to think, because it's a lot of project-based collaboration, so it's an excellent support network.
And so the professional development, is that part of the grant funding?
Yeah.
So the money that is.
It's shared, so some of it is shared. So for example, the grant will pay for the course.
Okay.
The grant will help us with any travel associated with, for example, one of our teachers went to Indiana last year for training, is only offered in two places in the country, and that was one of the places. So they'll help you with that. There are some things the grant won't pay. They won't pay for what we, what we have to pay the teacher as a stipend, for example.
Okay.
But they, they share costs, they'll pay for supplies, durable supplies.
They will.
Not consumables, so.
Right, and we also got some capital money a couple of years back.
Right.
So we were able to purchase the bulk of the computer pieces associated with the engineering pathway through the capital item.
But I do think that's an important distinction, because we just had a conversation about things are tight, things are difficult, and you look at the two courses, it's $100,000, right? But it's not $100,000 coming out of the operating money. It's a great use of one-time money, actually, because it's startup, it really is one-time expense.
Yes.
You know, to seed the course and the materials and whatever, so.
But at the same time, so we still have to fund two new teachers?
Yeah.
Or, let's say.
So they have to go to training, so, but in this particular case, now, this could change year to year, but for this particular year, the two teachers that are currently teaching Project Lead the Way at the high school, the engineering and biomed, are open to taking the training for next year. So they would go next year.
So we wouldn't have to hire anybody for either of these courses?
We don't have to hire, we do have to train. They do have, they do have to take the course, the Project Lead the Way course.
Right, and depending on student interest, it could mean that something else in the program of studies as far as an elective wouldn't run, because more kids are interested in this than some other random elective.
Little additional staff you needed, and so, yeah, so that confused me. So what you're saying is, is we just haven't had someone sign on, but we do have the staff already.
Correct.
They just haven't taken the professional development.
They just have to do the professional development, right.
Okay. I was going to say, because I, you know, do we need to, like, wait until we have our joint budgets up to figure out how much money we're getting before we approve this, or?
No, so you're just approving to put it in the program of studies, and, you know, Mark will, will front-load with the fact that when we have the program of studies night, we talk to families and students about, these are just everything that we offer. It may or may not run based off of budget and based off of student interest, so.
Okay, all right. And this year, we ran a lot of these courses. So we ran four biomedical classes at both the honors and CP level, and we ran three engineering classes at the honors and CP level. So we had a great, we had actually a healthy number of seniors take advantage of those courses, which I think is great, because it's a great way for them to see, oh, is this something I want to pursue as a career option or as a college concentration? So I think that was great, but they'll fall off next year.
Okay.
So that, the numbers of courses, I would anticipate probably won't, I mean, I don't know what the eighth graders are going to do, but it would probably pretty much be the same, probably three engineering courses and four biomed classes.
Okay.
So that piece of it might, might stay the same.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I asked you to plug this, Dave, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Patrick, anything else?
No, I think having courses like this is incredibly important for our kids, right, for that exact reason. If nothing else, they're gaining exposure. So if I'm going to go to Wentworth for engineering, and I can take this class, and I at least get a foundational understanding where it's safe, you know, and it's a controlled environment, I'm not much farther ahead, no different than how our philosophy is, everybody should be able to take an AP course. Because even if you take an AP course and get a D, you're so much better off, and your likelihood of success in college skyrockets, right? That's what these courses do for our kids.
Absolutely.
I agree. So those are the two courses that are associated. So, those are the two courses that are associated with the pathways right now. The next course that we are proposing is AP World History. This is a class that would ideally be for 10th grade students, and it would be an option for students who are, you know, love history, want to continue on a, on a more in-depth level. They would go from World History I to AP World History. AP World History covers, it's a survey course, also covers the material that they would generally take in US I. These students, a lot of these AP World History students, would then move into AP US History in their junior year, so that material gets covered actually again. So, there's, it's, I think, you know, at first glance, one thing might be like, well, what about US I? US I is covered here, and then US I gets covered again, actually, in AP US II, because that test encompasses both of those periods. So, I don't think, I think it would be a great opportunity for some of our 10th graders who want to challenge themselves to move in that direction.
Didn't we have this?
We talked about adding AP Human Geography, which ended up not, not being something very viable. They were trying to offer that at the ninth grade level.
Yeah.
Some schools picked it up, not a lot of schools stuck with it. Then they developed this course, which we're starting to see become more popular on the South Shore, and the pathway that they're recommending is 10th grade, is a good time for students to give it a try. Ninth grade's tough to put a student into an AP class.
They've never done it.
No, we haven't generally had one in the ninth grade. I mean, we have, obviously, some math students that are light-years ahead of the rest of us, but I don't even think they were hitting AP at ninth grade, yeah.
Do we, because, do we have to approve these?
This is just a first read for you guys, so you're gonna take them, once you're done with the last new course proposal, you're gonna take them as a first read, and we'll bring them back in.
And then the final class that we're proposing is an AP Spanish Literature and Culture class. Right now, we teach an AP Spanish Language and Culture class. This is an alternate. We have a couple of juniors this year, I think about five or six, Mark knows probably better, but we have a group of juniors that are completing the AP Spanish Language class. They've accelerated on their own time over, over their high school career, and there is some interest in this. This, again, would only run if there are enough students to run it, but we are exploring, maybe there's a group of kids that would want to take this one year and take the language one the next year, maybe we flip-flop them, we'll see. But I think that there's enough interest, and we have a teacher that's interested in teaching it. I think it would be something that would be worth seeing if we have enough students to, to run a class like that.
Have you thought about what your base number would be? Because with some of these, like, I remember my kids were in AP French, two of them, there were five kids in the class, and thrilled they got the opportunity to do it. Some of the AP courses we're willing to run, but as far as the number of kids, I mean, have we thought about...
This would be a little bit different. I'd be looking for probably between 10 and 15 for something like this, because if we're offering AP Spanish Language also, we're offering an AP track for Spanish-speaking students. This is also...
It's more about culture and...
Correct. Well, you have to read text in the language, so it's incredibly demanding, it's a great course. It might be something that students could choose to do as an independent study if, if it doesn't, you know, but it's, there's no way for us to really know how much interest is there unless it's sort of in the Program of Studies and people are making a commitment to it. So, we can hear a lot of feedback through surveys, but until they're actually filling out that form, it's hard for us to know what students want. And I do feel that, you know, hearing the voice of the students has been super helpful in a lot of the courses that we've offered. The engineering and biomed are prime examples. When we started that process, which now seems like 100 years ago, but about five years ago, when we surveyed students, the number two picks were those courses, and low and behold, right away, we had, what, like, 90 kids take Biomed and 68 kids take Engineering. That's a significant number for our population to be selecting, so...
We were worried that no one was gonna sign up for those when we first put them in the Program of Studies. We were worried about them when we added it, and so, seeing that now, it's over.
So, those are the, the new courses that we've proposed so far, so...
Do you wanna just take them as a first read, so...
Sure. Is there a first read course?
No.
So, moved to accept the three?
Four.
Four courses, sorry. Four courses as presented as a first read?
Is there a second?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded, and any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
The second thing in your package that I think would be the best next place to land is the pathways. So, if you can take a look at the pathways, we'll start with the Bio, Biomedical Science pathway, it's like this. Mary Ellen Gates, who is our coordinator for the pathways, has spent quite a bit of time making these consistent, making sure they line up, making sure that we are offering a number of different things for our students who are taking, especially Biomedical and the Engineering, because those are such defined courses that students have to take in order to complete the program. So, the first few are just edits, and they're very much, some of them is grammar, some of it's spelling, it's really not hugely significant. We do see the addition of oral language in all of these pathways in order to recognize how important it is for our students to be thinking about speaking another language and wanting to encourage them to continue at that level. The, the newer pathways that we're proposing is one for Information Technology. That's the last one, I think, in your packet there. Information Technology, we are hoping to appeal, we do have a group of students right now who are on track to accomplish something like this, but this would be, for students who are interested in computer work, they're interested in help desk kind of things, they're interested in hardware, they're interested in a lot of aspects of the Computer Science Pathway, but they may not want to do coding, they may not want to do the programming part of the AP courses that we offer. This offers them another path that they can take in order to achieve that skill set, so that when they are leaving high school, again, they have options. There are ways for them to use those skills, either in a career or in a college setting. So, Information Technology was something that we, as a group, felt was really important to offer to our students. The Global Citizenship and Learning Pathway, really what that pathway does is acknowledge the students that we already have and the courses that we already have. For our students that are exploring international relations, languages, Model UN features heavily in that diplomacy, we do have a number of students that are already doing this work, and the teachers in the humanities wanted to make sure that we are acknowledging that they are also on a pathway and that they are doing some rigorous work associated with that. And then the last pathway that we are included in here is a Music Pathway, which, again, is something that already, this is actually formalizing something that already exists. We have students that are already doing this, and we want to make sure that we, again, are celebrating those students and making sure that they, that their work is also acknowledged, and that we give them, as part of the program, an opportunity for internships and the support of the school. These things have been happening anyways through senior project. In many cases, we have a lot of our, our music and art students tend to do a lot of student teaching in the spring with some of the teachers in the district in order to hone those skills, that they're into, into the education piece of music or art. But there are other, lots of other companies and areas around here where, you know, our music department and art department have reached out to different people, and they are interested in partnering with us and having our students do things that are associated with maybe music business. That's another area that seems to be very appealing to kids, music and marketing. So, there's lots of different avenues for all of these students to, to pursue. So, we're excited about recognizing those students.
Do you have to matriculate on the path that you're getting right now?
No, so, because of how we started it, Patrick, we had students, we would do the same thing with these new pathways, take a look at who's there already, what do we need. Mary Ellen did an amazing job last year, met with each of the students, and would say, well, here, you're at, I forget what it says for music, so, 22 credits?
Yeah.
You're at 20 credits, you have 20, you have two more to go.
Correct.
Like, here's what I would recommend that you do, here's how I, I can help you find an internship, what are you interested in doing? So, she's been working one-on-one with students and made some great adjustments in terms of, families can now see on Power School that their student is in a pathway, her name is listed, she's, you know, developing those relationships, not just with families, but with vendors and, not vendors, companies and different people in, in the community.
So, you wanna take the edits to the pathways as a first read?
Is there a motion to take the, the 24, 25 PHS Program of Studies, oh, no, we're, sorry.
You're on the pathways, yep.
PH Program of Studies pathways revisions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Okay, the other topics are on the front of your page, and they, they start with the requirement for history. So, if we are introducing a new AP course, our requirement for history would have to shift a little bit in our Program of Studies. So, the proposal is that students must pass three years of history, including one year of United States History II. That would just give us the ability to count an AP World History towards a history requirement.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, thank you.
US History II Junior?
Correct.
No, I think I know the answer, I'm gonna ask a question anyway, because I'm a little jaded, and I'm one of those parents way back when whose daughter or child never had US History taught to them K through 12 because of the, you remember that group, right?
Yes.
The chains that the Commonwealth had of their curriculum, right? If making this a requirement should be, I didn't get, I, we should never graduate a kid who has not had foundational US History.
100% agree with you.
I know you, every kid has the opportunity to take and understand US History, correct?
Yes, right, and a couple of things safeguard that, right? So, Mass General Law has also changed.
Yeah.
So, in eighth grade, the class is a civics class, so it is an in-depth look at the Constitution and where the Constitution came from, and there's also a project required, and now they're introducing a test in eighth grade for our eighth graders because they should have four tests. But anyways, they are gonna be taking a civics MCAS test as well, as well as doing a project. That law also requires that our students do a civics project in the 11th grade. So, even though they're taking AP US II or whatever level of US History II they're taking, they also have an opportunity to do a civics project at that time. So, yes, that's the short...
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we are, we're not forgetting US History at all. How could you? Should I keep moving, or does anyone have any questions about that particular shift?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, so the second piece was brought to us by our Guidance Department, primarily because this is a movement that's happening in some other areas, and also because there's a little bit of confusion about GPAs. So, every school has a GPA, call it a cocktail, right? So, they all have their sort of mix about what goes into the GPA, which is great and very important. Ours happens to be weighted, and it has all of our classes in it, and that's great. What we know about college admissions is that when our students are applying to college, the colleges start pulling apart, that they don't even, the kid's GPA, you know, great, whatever, they start pulling it apart, and they give the kid a number based on what they believe the courses look like, the number of APs, the number of honors classes, what your school offers. So, our Guidance Department has proposed that we add to Power School for families and students that we add an estimated college grade point average. This would only be an internal data point. This is something that would help families and students to understand better. For some of you who have gone through the years of Naviance, where kids would plug in their GPA, and they could see who in the past 10 years from Pembroke did what, and where did they line up? We have a different system now called SCORE, but it does the same thing. What this would do is the estimated college GPA basically pulls out, whether we agree with this or not, what they tend to do is pull out at the college level, your PhysEd grades, any business grades, any arts or music grades that are not AP-weighted, they pull out some of those electives. So, this estimated college GPA would be a different number than your PHS GPA. We're not proposing that we do anything else with that except for, for it to serve as an information point for families and students, so that if you happen to be a student who has a 4.5 GPA, but you have a number of electives that a college might not take into consideration, maybe your GPA is more like 3.8, that, this would give you a number that's a little bit more, a little bit, a better point of information for you to be making applications to school. And again, it's an internal data point. We would be using, we would be using our traditional PHS weighted grade point average for valedictorian, salutatorian, for NHS, for all of those things, because we believe as, as a school community that the arts are very important, PhysEd is very important, our elective programs are important. We're not trying to diminish that. We just know from some feedback that it would be helpful to families and students if they knew a little bit better about what the colleges are doing with those grades.
I, I thought this was a really interesting idea when we talked about this at the Education Sub Meeting, because, you know, the PHS GPA is what's gonna go on the transcripts, that's their official score that they graduate with. But it gives the student and the parents a, just a better ballpark figure of what a, of how a college is gonna look at it. And who knows, down the road, you can start, possibly start fine-tuning it, and, you know, as, as data gets better and better, you might be able to even fine-tune it towards specific colleges as opposed to a rough ballpark figure, so...
And I had an opportunity to have a conversation with our Guidance Counselor, and one of the things that she pointed out is that if the student is a business student or a music student, there's ways for them to inform that student as well, then your PHS, you know, number is probably a good number for you to use. That's an excellent point of information. But if you are going, you know, to WPI maybe for math or engineering, you might wanna see what your competition looks like in terms of whittling down that GPA to, to the number that the school is going to be looking at. And it's really, you know, sometimes this is very frustrating, this work, because you hate to think that all we're doing is thinking about, like, the next level, but it's really important, especially with the cost of all of these applications and the cost of college. I think it's important for us to be giving...
The time the applications take, too.
Right, giving families as much information as we can, and we, this is something we can do. So, I think that it's something that would be helpful to most people.
So, I think it's a great idea, especially because a lot of people really don't understand how any of that works.
A lot of it seems random.
Yeah, and, and as a, you know, when my oldest was going through all this, I didn't understand it. I was very confused by all of it and didn't, you know, was compared, I wasn't comparing the right numbers or whatever, for whatever colleges.
Yep.
But I guess my question is, is how do we package this so parents understand it? Like, we understand it because we deal with it every day, right? But how are we packaging it on Power School that's so, so that parents understand the difference between the two GPAs?
Yeah, we can certainly communicate that, we can put it, we could actually put some, we would go into the, the red line down the bottom, explains it as well, it'd be in the Program of Studies. But if, if it requires, for example, Mark does parent, parent nights and Program of Studies nights, there's lots of ways we can, we can push that information out.
Yeah.
Obviously, the best place, if somebody has a question, is to go to your Guidance Counselor or to reach out to the administrators at the high school. But I think overall, assuring people that it's an internal data point, it's not something that's, you know, going out to anyone, it's something for you to use and see what your GPA looks like when you pull out some of your electives.
Will it be on progress reports at all, or is this literally just on Power School? Like, what's the thought on that?
My thinking is, it's a Power School tool, and it's really just for college applications. It's not a number that we'd be using for anything else, that, that was never the intent. The intent is really to give people more accurate information. And I don't work in the world of guidance, but that's something that's coming up. So, it's something that I think, you know, I would, I think we'd be remiss not to be listening to the people that are hearing this feedback day in and day out.
I think the reality of what we're doing is, you're providing the right data points to the folks that need it. Because the other thing that I can do is, if I'm a, let's say I'm in my sophomore year, and I'm, you know, chugging around at like a 3.9 or 4.1 or whatever, except I'm taking all my APs yet, right? And I'm like, yeah, I'm rocking, I'm killing it, and then I look at my core, I'll just call it core GPA for now, or my university GPA is a 3.2, I might make different decisions or my university GPA is a three-two, I might make different decisions about the courses I elect my junior and senior year, right, to make me more competitive, to make sure that I can, I can strive for success. So I think that's awesome. My only question, and you alluded to it, is I don't, and there may be, but is there a formula somewhere? So it's formulaic and we take the subjectivity out of it? Or is it, or they kind of do this, so we're gonna do our best and sort of-
So a little bit of both. We know, for example, from talking to area schools, that most area schools remove Phys Ed, art, music, business courses. It gets a little tricky because every school district, for example, business, business could be under the math department, it could be under world language, whatever, but those business courses themselves don't generally find their way into the estimated, um, college GPA. Same thing with Phys Ed, um, for the most part. Now, that could be different. You might have a student that's trying to go to, I'm looking at David because I'm thinking of Springfield, but, you know, you could have a student that that's, you know, that's their passion, that's where they're going. That estimated GPA will matter. That, that will, that will be well respected and taken into account. So I think, um, there is a formula that we would have to commit to, obviously. What that looks like for us, we have a little bit of flexibility with. But I think given the goal is to give kids as much information as possible before they leave here, we would try to be as selective as possible and pick some more brains in regards to the, um, to the college admissions people, which Karen, Karen Goff, who's our lead counselor, has done, and there is a spreadsheet, and I think it just begs one more look between, you know, Mark and myself and then the Teaching and Learning Group. But overall, it's usually Phys Ed, art, music, business. And then some of your courses could go either way. Like, there's a couple that financial literacy could be a math class, it could be a business class, you know, so there's a couple like that. You have to play with it a little bit.
I think this is really important for families. Having lived through the college process with three kids, it is, it is more competitive today than it was just for my kids, youngest ones graduated September nine, twenty eighteen. Every advantage and data point that you can give families is going to help them. And there is literally zero reason. The other thing too is you're saying your achievement is equal to the effort that you're ultimately putting in from both the way your university looks at it, but your overall achievement. And I think to your point, if you're gonna go to Berklee College of Music for music, well, Berklee's gonna actually weight your music courses much higher. In, in those unique circumstances, you're right. I mean, then you can take your total GPA and you're good to go.
And that's accurate, that's accurate to use.
Yeah, it's accurate to use, but I think it's, it gives families the right data points. And I, I think, I think it's a great thing to do.
On the bottom, sorry, I was kind of running out of room and having a moment, I guess, for the environment. But on the bottom here is, in red is the, um, the information that would go into the Program of Studies. So there would be clarification, and we also wanted just to add the, um, what the Massachusetts Board of Higher Education, what they have identified as their minimum requirements. Guidance counselors go over this with students. I don't want you to think for one minute that this isn't something that kids don't know or families don't know, but we think we should have it in the-
Right in front of you, it's different than being-
Right, right.
Absolutely.
So I, it's, you know, I think it bears repeating as many times as possible, um, because it is a very confusing process.
But we would rank salutatorian, valedictorian, maybe even kick to a top ten, not that I'm highest, uh, with the Pembroke GPA.
Yes, I, I think, I think that's equally important. I think, I want, I really believe that we want to take the whole student into account when we're looking at that.
Anything official comes from the Pembroke GPA.
Correct.
The other, the other number is really, I don't wanna say an imaginary number, but it's just not an official number. It's just a guidance, a guide for-
It's a tool. It's a tool for families to use if they're a little bit curious about how their student might stack up in a college environment. So for example, you might have a ton of grade electives, you're getting, you know, very high grades in your electives, your GPA might be close to five-point-oh, but when you start to strip away some of that, maybe your GPA is closer to a four. I don't know how, if that's mathematically possible, Erin would know better. But when you go to plug your numbers into SCORE or to Naviance, you're gonna make a huge difference in regards to the data that you pull from that in terms of what's a reach school, what's a safety school, what's, what, what do you write on target for? You're gonna get different data, and it's important to have both sets of the data, I think.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, moving right along. Oh, the, the la, next thing was just to add the, um, the verbiage in red to the Program of Studies, add the Massachusetts College Acceptance Information. Okay, um, one of the next things that we discussed, um, in our, um, Teaching and Learning and Admin Team with the high school group is eliminating directed study for grade nine students. So right now, um, students have the ability to access extra help or study time during tighten time, Tuesday to Friday. They have an advisory on Mondays. And this, we're coming at this from a couple of different things. I, once we started looking at other schools and what's been going on, now that we're a little bit, a couple of years away from the COVID, you know, everybody's doing their own thing and marching to their own drum, or we're trying to, you know, get back on track and see what, where people have shifted. And I did do, um, a deep dive into the Program of Studies, you can take a look at this, of our, um, local area schools as a comparison point and our DART schools. And if you recall, the DART schools are what the state identifies as our district-alike schools. And when you start to look at, um, you know, what are people requiring, requiring for graduation, you can see a range. There's, you know, definitely a range here, and, you know, we fall somewhere in the middle of what we require. But one of my concerns is that our students, for a long time, there was a movement in the Commonwealth that there were no study halls, and that they've kind of crept back in the form of a directed study. And I just wanna make sure our students are well aware of the fact that they have an opportunity to be fully loaded. I'm not in any way suggesting that we want kids so stressed out that they're, you know, losing their minds over this, but I do think we have some room in our schedule for students to be taking some additional courses. We heard a lot of information from parents regarding the pathways, um, in the spring, especially the eighth grade, um, families, and there were some conflicts. Some of those students that had conflicts, they had room in their schedule. There were semester courses that they would have been able to enroll in should they wanted to, but they wanted to have a study. So it gets a little bit tricky on our side of the aisle in terms of trying to meet all of those, um, you know, all of those desires, all of those concerns that families have. I think ninth graders would benefit from having a fully loaded schedule with a tighten time in the middle of the day. Having said that, I'm curious to hear what you think.
Right, before we flip to that, I just wanna clarify. So what we're saying is that students would not be able to, ninth grade, incoming ninth graders would not be able to elect a study during course selection. We all understand that there are absolute instances where a student in ninth grade may require a study hall, and that is something that would be worked out with the student, the family, and the guidance counselor. But not letting them just go in and pick it as an option during, um, course registration. The other piece, as Mary Beth just alluded to, the, the information in red on the Mass Board of Higher Ed Minimum Requirements has a few requirements that we don't have at Pembroke High School, which includes some, a two-year world language requirement, there's an arts requirement. You know, we're kind of in the place where our enrollment is pretty, pretty flat. We continue to offer more and more courses to students at the high school. It would be great if we had a better understanding of what kids actually wanted to take, right? And so asking ninth graders to take a semester elective opposite PE instead of the study that seventy-eight of them are taking right now, um, helps us to understand what are the interests of students, right? We, Gwen will sit here, when she does her budget presentation, we've heard in the past, she sees her numbers going down. This is an opportunity for kids to be exposed to arts, to get a semester of ceramics, to get a semester of piano lab. You know, I do think we spend a tremendous amount of time building our Program of Studies. We want kids in classes. The, the option to just go in and take a directed study without any conversation, I think, you know, is, is a disservice to students and families.
And it's a disservice if you think of the whole picture. If, if surrounding areas and our DART schools are requiring a world language, they're requiring an arts component to the education. We wanna make sure that our students are competitive outside of Pembroke as well. Does, do they stack up? And, you know, for some of our students, they would benefit from widening their horizons and having an opportunity to take some of those classes. We, I think shy away as a group from saying you must do X, Y, and Z. I think that's a lot of, you know, families need to be a part of that conversation, students, to Erin's point. We need to figure out better where students would land if they had the opportunity to take a fully loaded schedule.
Right, so instead of coming to you and saying, we're recommending a semester of arts be a graduation requirement or a two-year world language requirement, we'd rather see where students pick on their own first.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, um, I, I don't think my daughter would like it, because she likes to have a study. However, I think it is a good idea that all students are exposed to, you know, some sort of an arts or, you know, I, you know, having more options available. Like, it does make a more well-rounded student, in my opinion, if they're sort of like forced to like see what the art class is all about, or, you know.
Right, and if you take a six-hour and forty-minute school day and back out, lunch, tighten time, and a study, you're talking about less than five hours of instructional time.
Yeah.
Was that our intent when we lengthened the student day? I don't think so. I think the intent was to get them to class.
Yeah, if I could just say, I, I don't wanna underestimate the, the role of tighten time, um, in my thought around this, right? And I've come a complete one-hundred degrees on this topic, right? I was always a study hall guy. We all needed that study hall. But now that we have tighten time, our students have, if you take a full-year study hall, that's fifty-five minutes plus forty minutes of tighten time, that's over ninety minutes a day where kids can get their work done. And what I said in EdSub was, both of those tools are really important if they use well. But because the kids have now more time, they're not using either one of them as effectively as they should. And I'm just basing that on my own observations, my internal evidence. I'm in those classrooms every single day. And I see kids not using those times as they, as I think they should. I think that there's a better use for their minds than, than what's happening right now with, with those things. Tighten time is an important part of what our kids do, and they get a lot of that, that time to get their work done or to get support. And I, I think it's, I think it's plentiful.
And I know during EdSub, I strongly objected to this. I am concerned about, is this like a transition? You guys gonna want to change this to tenth grade? Like, I'm worried about how far this is gonna-
Right, so we had originally talked about ninth and tenth grade, right? Ideally, ninth and tenth graders should be exposed to what we're offering at Pembroke High School. It's, it's rare that a fourteen or fifteen-year-old knows exactly what they wanna be when they grow up. You know, we all recognize that by the time you get to your junior of high school, most of our students are carrying a pretty hefty course load with APs and, and whatnot. And that seems like the time where a, a student would naturally need a more study time over the course of the day. The reason why we're not proposing ninth and tenth grade at the same time is that we're talking about putting, thirty, seventy, a hundred and eight students over the course of two semesters into something else with just the ninth grade. So we need to see what effect that has on the schedule. You know, with the, the goal of this was not to need to add staff. Keep in mind, when we give you the October one enrollment numbers, we always say there are some courses that are designed to run at forty. Those are directed studies, band, some of the PE courses. We don't wanna be saying that this change now requires ten additional staff members. We wanna be able to use the places where we have some inefficiency in our schedule and we're running some pretty low, um, section numbers to, to take advantage of that and see kind of where it leaves us.
Because I look at it as if we have a hundred and some kids using a study, I would think is because they need it. And also, um, you know, the transition into freshman year, I think is a pretty hard transition, at least it has been. Talking about something like that. So I don't like taking away the directed study, so I'll just-
Yeah, we did not offer ninth graders directed studies, I think, ten years ago. It wasn't part of it.
Allison, can I ask you a question? I wanna, I wanna hear a little more about your concerns, because I'm kind of like I've listened both sides of the issue.
So, I, I, at least from my personal observation, is a lot of them do it back-to-back with PE. So it's, you know, they have PE, which is kind of that time to kind of not be as, you know, to be active and, you know, whatnot. And then reverse it with the next semester being the study, it kind of gives them, you know, it, it's not that focused, your mind being on the whole time, you know, type thing. And it gives, you know, for some of the classes that do require a lot, you know, not a lot of homework, but, you know, decent amount of homework, it does lower that, you know, because, not that necessarily freshmen might not all work after school, but, you know, you have the athletes and we have, you know, people that are after-school hours are busy. You know, we don't know what everybody's family life looks like. So this gives them that time. And I think it's utilized, and so if the problem is that they're not utilizing it well, then maybe we need to look at how directed study is-
Right, and the argument you just made is exactly the reason why we added tighten time. So if you go back to six or seven years ago, when we added it, it was students are so busy outside of school that commitment, sports, jobs, families, we need to give them a time during the day where every student has, you know, a dedicated forty minutes to get work done, to seek out help from a teacher, because not everyone can stay after school. And I think, as Mark said, that has now had us all to start thinking differently about studies. Is, does it make sense to have both of those things in a schedule? You know, we, we've talked a lot about what a well-rounded student looks like. You know, I don't think it's the end of the world for a ninth grader to take a ceramic selective opposite PE. I don't, it's a different part of your brain than you're using for that versus geometry or honors U.S. History, so.
All kids have tighten time, right?
All kids have tighten time.
And, and the reason I ask is, is when we put it in six or seven years ago, it was a kind of a special help day that you would put into tighten time in your schedule.
So everyone has tighten time. The way it works is that teachers can request specific students to come to them, or students can seek out the help that they believe they need. So some students are scheduled and some students create their own schedule, but everybody has it every day.
My, my question though, because you're making it really a play, Allison, that's right. I'm not picking on you. I actually wanna know more, a little bit. If we have the time built in for the student automatically in the day to whether it be, to your point, some kids just need to be compressed a little bit, right? They need to shut off a little bit, um, time to do some work and that type of thing. Is that sufficient, or do, especially I'm thinking ninth grade, maybe tenth grade, is that sufficient for those kids and give them the opportunity to be exposed to something else? Or are you concerned that's still not enough time?
So, I guess, I don't, I guess-
And I don't mean to leave the-
No, no, I guess I don't quite, so, meaning that you don't think tighten time, like, why am I, do I think-
No, no, what I'm trying to figure out is, it, having the directed study and tighten time for half the year, you in essence have, call it two periods of your day that isn't scheduled with class, right? And what I'm trying to, the reason, I'm, I'm trying to pull this out a little bit, to understand it better. If we just, if, because we have tighten time and it's guaranteed, is the time that you're talking about kids needing to do work-
So I think, from my understanding of tighten time, is it's not always, they, they're, there's time for the students, it's not their actual time. Like, they're having to, you know, they're scheduled to go somewhere and, yes, they're, you know, making up tests or they're making up or getting help or, you know, and I think if my understanding is they do it on Mondays for the rest of the week. So they might need to, you know, get help or whatever. So that time that they have a study is their time to either use it or not. You know, like, it's, it's up to them, but it's, it's time that they have to do homework or to study for the test or, you know, um, make notes or, you know, depending on if other students, you know, I don't know, collaborate. But, you know, it definitely should not be just free time running around in a library or something like that. You know, and it should be utilized as well as possible. But I think also, as kids get older, they have to learn how to use their time because, you know, when you go into college or in the real world, like, that's, you have to learn how to manage your time. And I think having it in as controlled environment as possible. And I, I don't know, I guess I just see the numbers like, is that like half the eighth grade, I mean, this ninth grade class?
Right, so there's seventy-six ninth graders that have one semester of a study and thirty-six that have a full year of study. So that's a hundred and twelve, that's more than fifty percent of the-
So that's where I just feel like we're taking away a lot that these kids are, I don't know.
No, but you just, if I, just one more question, I don't know, comes off topic. You, you just said something that I hadn't thought of, right? So I asked my question, Megan, Mark, for you and Mary Beth. Because one of the things you said, and I don't even know, maybe you're saying it, is the kids who need help most are the ones that may benefit the most from having a directed study, is they're using tighten times to get the help, and then they can use the directed study to get some of the work done. Are you finding that, or is that, would that be a downside to do, because that, that is sort of what I got from what you just said.
From my experience, you know, when I had, my daughter only has taken one semester, and she was one of the freshmen that would have done that, um, flip-flop with the PE. But, you know, when these kids, I don't know, I just feel like it's, it's such a transition for kids into high school that just taking away that, not, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like it's a large percentage. I just don't think people will be happy if we take it away, I guess. I just, I really think parents and students are, it's, I, I know the, you know, the incoming freshman wouldn't know any different not having it, but I just feel like it's-
Right, we don't have studies at our middle school. You know, to your, your point of teaching students time management, the high school schedule is a rotate-drop, right? So that's a whole, you know, the idea that you don't have math tomorrow is a very interesting concept for our eighth and ninth grader, our eighth going into ninth graders. So I, I do think some of that maturing is built in without, without having access to a study hall, but.
I think for Allison's point, um, about the tighten time, one of the strong points that she makes, I think, is that the kids have to schedule, like, their tighten time is scheduled with their teachers. It's not scheduled to sit down and do work. It's scheduled to sit, like, you, you get a schedule on Monday and you're meeting with, you know, English one day, math another day. You know, like, the, the teachers schedule you for it, and then you go. And so you're just working, you're concentrating on one subject whether you want to or not, because that's your scheduled time. Sometimes you need it, sometimes you don't, but, um, it's not like you're sitting there doing work. Now, it, it's difficult because I also see the other side, because I would like to see more students take, um, because I would like to see more students take more electives in, in the younger years. Because, like you said, to your point, it's very difficult to make a decision in ninth grade about what you want to do for the rest of your life. And so, like, to have, like, you know, band, like, our music class or, you know, like, an art class or street law even, which I see as next on the thing to talk about. But I, I don't know. I just think it's a tough decision because Titan Time really isn't used as a study. On, on the flip side, I do know that my daughter, she didn't take one freshman or sophomore year. She's taking a study and she does go to the library an awful lot. So, I don't know what the point is.
Right. So, those are all very good points. It's hard to argue against all those points. I think we're on the same side with specific kids, you know what I mean? But I just will say though, that if a student is in good academic standing and they have openings in their schedule, and by the way, most of the time, a student in good academic standing does have openings in the schedule because teachers aren't claiming them. Yes, I'm sorry. They're in the cafeteria treating it as a study hall. They're in the library, right? So, our cafeteria, every Titan Time house is seventy-five kids every single day. The library, fifty-five kids every single day. And those kids are in there, some of them are treating that as a study hall. Others are decompressing, talking with their friends. And we built it that way for, for that reason, because I see value in that. I do, in the middle of a very busy day. What I've just learned is that, and, and prior to Titan Time, we didn't really have the, the population of study halls as we do now. I, I think about those days where it was very common for a student to not have a study hall and we didn't have Titan. It wasn't a thing, you know? Now, I just feel as though we have gone in the other direction too far. I do feel as though the study hall population has grown a lot significantly, you know? And to your point about, you know, those classes where their, their brains aren't as strained, so to speak, in phys ed, in ceramics. I think it's, as we've already said around this table here, I think it's a great opportunity to funnel kids unwittingly into areas of study that they might not even have ever considered and all of a sudden develop an interest in this. And now we have a much more well-rounded student rather than a student who's sitting in a study hall for fifty-five minutes a day. I think that's, that's the part I focus on. I, I get what you're saying totally, you know?
And I totally appreciate and, you know, want more kids taking, you know, these, you know, electives. Is there, I don't know, not compromise, but is there a way to make it where they have to be approved? Like, instead of having it where they can just check it off, then for freshmen, they have to have it, approved is the right word. But, you know, like, I know my daughter, she did not originally sign up for a study and then ended up changing, you know, right around this time last year so that she could have the study after her PE. So, I don't, I don't know if there's just a way to make it so that freshmen, they have to ask for it rather than, you know, opt...
Which is part of what we talked about, right? Is that you just can't pick it, but there has to be an avenue for students that still feel as though they need it and parents and families that support that. It's like an override or something. I think that's fair.
Oh, God, do not say that word.
I just don't know if there's a way to make it so it's not just eliminate directed study. Make it be, I don't know.
So, generally speaking, it's kind of like, you know, you need a teacher's recommendation in order to take an AP class, for example. Like, it should be something similar. You need a recommendation to take a study as a freshman.
Because how is it, how is it presented to the eighth graders? Like, when they're signing up for classes? Like, can it just, how, what do they tell, I don't know?
So, what we used to do is, it just isn't listed as an option for them. And so, when the guidance staff go down to the eighth grade to talk to the students about course selection, they say that study hall isn't an option. But, you know, if, you know, between the, you know, makeup of your teachers, your family administration, there's obviously conversations that happen that students would, going into ninth grade, ended up with a study hall.
And we still end up with like eighty kids taking it.
I don't think you would because just granted...
No, but like right now, like, right now, like, what do they, that's what I'm wondering, like, like...
So, right now, it's just part of the...
Right now, when you go in to pick ceramics, you pick study hall instead.
Okay. So, that's what I'm wondering. If, if there's a way to not eliminate it for ninth grade, but not make it as easy of an option, meaning, like, you know, like, let the kids know that it's a teacher...
Well, what we're saying is it, it wouldn't be on the dropdown list of courses for you to select as a ninth grader, but we could explain during the process.
But could you just have it as a, a, as a course option, but have it be, you know, you have to get a recommendation for it?
I, I wouldn't. If you're gonna do...
We would have to decide with a criteria.
Well, that's what, yeah.
I, I, I'm kind of baffled by this. And I hate to say, I'm probably the oldest guy on the board. I just remember a study when I was in high school, I don't think we could do it till our junior or senior year. And most of the people I knew basically sat there and read the paper and BSed with a bunch of friends. I don't recall one person opening a book... I said I'm the oldest guy here. I, I kind of see, you know, Mark's point, you know, the, the, we have Titan Time. So, there's X amount of minutes. And again, some of that is assigned. Teachers, you want to make up work, you want to do whatever. But basically, to me, a study period when I was in high school was just a free period to sit on your tail and do absolutely nothing. And my thought is, we are an educational institution. Maybe I'm being a little tough on kids, but we're sending you to school to get an education, not to sit there and read the newspaper, not to sit and play on your phone, you know, not to say, oh, I have to decompress. I mean, I, I get it. It's a different world. I don't want to sound, again, like I walked to school uphill both ways. But I did.
In the snow.
In, in the snow on my bare feet. No, but it's just, I, I think the time is there, that they can use it. Everyone is busy. You know, it, it was, again, a little bit different. But I, I just think building a study into a ninth grader or a tenth grader is just a recipe for disaster. The one or two kids or maybe ten kids that, let's say, need it. Again, I think it, maybe it's a case-by-case basis with Mr. Talbot. I, I, I almost sound crazy. I can't believe we're having this discussion. You know, I think we should be encouraging kids to take classes, try things. Hey, if you take ceramics, you don't like it, what's your other option? Is there something else they can do? That's kind of my viewpoint. And again, no disrespect. I certainly hear what you're saying, Allison and Patrick. I hear what you guys are saying. But to me, I want the kids in school, in class, taking classes, not just buying time.
Right. I think so. You're just sitting here listening to the back and forth, looking at kind of the list that Mary Beth compiled of what other people are requiring. We're one of the only schools on this list that offers a PE waiver for our student athletes. A lot of people don't offer that. You know, so we're talking about a tenth grader that's playing cross-country gets a waiver from taking PE because they're an athlete here, but then has a full year study in their schedule. Like, there's just...
Here, here's, here's the thing that I think you, that I think about. I actually agree with you, by the way. But I think, first of all, I think it's important to make sure that all of our voices are heard as we have these discussions. But what struck me is when you said over fifty percent of the ninth grade class has a study. That's not the one-off or the handful of kids that for a variety of reasons may really need it. And to your point, it, it, it's going to get harder. It's not going to get easier. And I think they, because there's a built-in time in the middle of the day, and even if it's for someone with special health who's being directed, that's still a different time because honestly, it's what we all wish education to be. It's more one-on-one coaching. It's more one-on-one learning. There's still huge value that that child that needs the help is getting and they have dedicated time to make sure that they can get it later enough this day after. Giving additional time out of the day where they're not, where a child's not learning and school's going to get harder, no matter what path that you're on, I almost think it might be doing a disservice to the child at, at that point. So, I, I do think eliminating the, the directed study in ninth grade, I would do it for tenth grade also. It is, is appropriate. I will also say for whatever its worth, for years, we didn't have this, right? And the kids really didn't have an issue. As a matter of fact, Titan Time wasn't for, that's why I asked the question. Titan Time wasn't for every kid. It was only for kids, you were literally put in Titan Time by a counselor in order to gain and get the extra help in certain areas. And you got it semester by semester, right? It wasn't a...
Right. Those were, we called it something different, right? That's enrichment strategies. It's that.
They were strategies. That's right. But I think, Allison, to your point, if there are kids that the guidance group or Mark, maybe you and your team really sort of say, hey, for a lot of reasons, giving this kid a study may be a good thing. I think that's where we have to rely on you all as professionals to, to be able to, to make that fit for the nation.
Yeah.
But pushing kids isn't bad.
No, it's not. And to your point, like, my three sons had already graduated. I don't remember any of them having a study hall, to be honest. None of them did. I, I'm pretty sure. I think they were too busy with...
I do think when you get into eleventh and twelfth grade, when you have kids taking multiple AP classes and what have you, I get why you would schedule...
Actually, yeah. No, Will had it, Will had one, but he did his AP, his independent AP class. But other than that, like, I think...
We're not suggesting taking away senior studies or the senior privilege of coming later or leaving early when you have a study hall.
But before we send, finish this conversation, Mike, I didn't hear from you at all.
Yeah, I've been trying, but...
Patrick broke his microphone. He was talking. Sorry. I just want to go on record saying that.
I, I agree with Mary Beth and, and Erin about, about, geez, I've forgotten. It's been so long. But what Mark said about the kids being more efficient with their time, I do think if they have less free time or less time to devote to homework during the day, it sounds awful, but they're going to be more efficient with that time to get it done. I also think that, you know, like what Dave said, it's only going to get harder as it goes along. I mean, I, I breezed through freshman year in high school, then sophomore year like a slap in the face. So, I think it's only going to get harder. And I think they got to get used to. I, I just think it's a better service for the kids to get them used to having to really budget their time and to take, oh, I know what I was going to say. The kids will have exposure to other classes that they wouldn't normally take. Like, sometimes you need that little nudge if it's required. You know, so I think that's, that was a good, a good idea as well. But I think the kids also have to be, you know, taught to budget their time better. And, and I think that's a good way to do it, I guess. So, you know, I'm, I'm not as much of a hard ass as Dave about it, but I, I agree with his sentiment, I guess.
So, do we need a vote?
It's just a first read. These are all just first reads of revisions. Yep.
So, we have...
There's two more. Oh, there's two more.
Two more revisions. Yep.
The next one is a request from Dr. Galligan in social studies for street law. Right now, street law is offered to students in grades nine to twelve. They're asking that they change it to eleven to twelve. When we opened it up to nine to twelve, there were not a lot of elective offerings for ninth graders. We now have plenty of elective offerings for ninth graders. And because that course lends itself to some pretty sophisticated topics that are related to the Constitution, search and seizure, mock trials, they feel that sometimes the underclassmen don't get the full experience because they're moved, they're in there with seniors and juniors who are pretty dominant and pretty involved. And they would just like to see that, that become eleventh and twelfth grade class so that all kids could get as much out of it as possible.
So, I'm going to say, I don't know if, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but that wasn't my experience with my kids or specifically my daughter. But it, it was an excellent class for her to take in ninth grade. She loved it. And she got, she did extremely well. And I was grateful that she didn't take a directed study. She chose that instead. And, you know, she wants to be an attorney. So, like, this was really exciting for her to take. And I would be really sad to see that half-year, you know, it's like a, it's a half-year class. So, it's another option. It's a nice elective option for students. And I would hate to see it taken away from the younger grades. So, but I'm open to hearing whatever one wants to say. Mike?
I, I, we talked about this in the Ed Subcommittee meeting, and I actually agreed with you guys on that. I just think it's, it is difficult for a ninth grader to speak up, I, I think, to speak up in a class of, you know, maybe what, seventeen-year-olds, maybe eighteen-year-olds.
Yeah. It's a widely popular class. So...
It was her favorite class.
People love it. It's a great class. We could probably offer a full day of just street law if, you know, if we didn't have to teach history and other things. But it is very popular. I think the teacher moved this forward and with Mark's approval, basically because he just was a little worried. And, you know, no disrespect to Taya, but maybe not all kids are having that same positive experience. He's seeing that the older kids are dominating a little bit. And he just wants every kid to have that opportunity to, you know, be the lead attorney, be, be the judge.
Could we gear it back and have like a ninth and tenth grade level, an eleventh and twelfth grade level? Is that scheduling possible? I, I don't know. I'm just thinking...
Right. So, again, it all kind of comes out in the wash with the schedule and the budget and everything else and how many core history classes we have to teach. The electives come after the core courses.
Yeah.
As it is, I'm guessing, I didn't look at the street law numbers in particular tonight before I came here, but I'm sure it's heavily eleventh and twelfth grade because everybody doesn't get it right away. So, that is probably a bit of anomaly that, you know, that she was able to get it anyways, which sounds like it was a great fit for her. And we wouldn't want to, you know, ruin that opportunity for kids, just delaying it a little bit so that when kids are, kids are a little older when they're taking it. I think he also thought, like, sometimes the range of topics, ninth graders and twelfth graders can be a little bit difficult to navigate. Twelfth graders come with some pretty off-the-wall questions. A lot of search and seizure questions.
I'm sure there are. Can they fit it, if you only made it eleventh and twelfth, those rooms are already pretty packed, right? Right? Can they fit it in their schedules if they all really want to take it?
I'm not sure how many people don't get it right now, but mostly our eleventh and twelfth graders do get.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the underclassmen that don't get it that often anyways.
Yep.
But it has not been restricted to them. It would just, again, to Erin's point, on the dropdown menu, when you go to select your classes as an eighth grader, it wouldn't be there. It wouldn't be there until you were in the tenth grade.
Is there any value, and I, I ask you guys, is the, I guess the professionals, maybe not to make the dramatic change of saying going all the way to eleventh and twelve, but could you move it at least to tenth, right? And see, I don't know if you guys talked about that.
Yeah.
Right? Move it to tenth grade and, you know, and then take it and then see, okay, how's it going? Evaluate it after a year, maybe come back and say, hey, this is working or it's not. But...
Sure. I mean, we're open to that. We, again, trying to maximize that opportunity for students.
Yeah. I think that's a good thing. And to your point, if you're giving preference to eleventh and twelfth graders already, there's only so many slots left, right?
Exactly.
So...
Yeah. Just numbers right now, as I look at Brian's four sections, Brian King's four sections, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty-five. So, it's over a hundred kids in those four sections. There's eleven ninth graders total, total out of those a hundred and something kids. Eleven ninth graders are in there.
How about tenth?
A little more as I'm looking at it. A little more.
What if you...
It's mostly upper class.
This is just throwing something out there, but what if you did what you proposed, it's restricted to grades eleven to twelve? And sort of like in college, if one class doesn't fill up, you could open it up to ninth and tenth graders? Is that...
In reality, that's kind of what's happening right now.
That's exactly how it works. That's how it works.
Eleven and twelfth graders get it first. So, the upper classmen get it first. And then, as Mark was saying, there's nine or eleven ninth graders. So, there's not a lot. Over four sections. There's like two in a class.
Yeah. Well, three per class.
Yeah. I think, I like the idea of at least including tenth graders. I'd be more open. But Allison, what do you, what do you think?
I don't have a strong opinion, I guess, either way. As long as it doesn't, you know, taking away the class eight for the level doesn't make it where they would get eliminated, you know, like where they wouldn't fill it kind of thing. So...
So, popular.
Yeah.
David?
No, I think my question was that, you know, the idea of could we do a section of eleven and twelve and nine and ten? It doesn't sound like it works that way. But, you know, I'm, I'm open to pretty much anything on that one. Like Allison, I don't think they have a big stand either way.
So, it sounds like go to ten and see how it works and...
Right. So, this is your first read, right?
Yep.
Ten, ten, eleven and twelve.
Last one.
The last one. It's probably the most difficult one and one that's very, you know...
This was heated.
Well, it's complicated to talk about because, you know, as a classically educated person, I do believe in Latin. Latin has its place and it's a very, it's, it's a very helpful structure and language to know. So, of course, whenever we're talking about cutting back on something, it's very difficult because we hate to, we hate to do that. Programmatically, over the past few years, our student enrollment in Latin has declined. And I would be remiss to say that that is not also true in French. So, both Latin and French have had a decline over the past few years. But at this point, our recommendation is that we begin to phase out Latin III and Latin IV. That would not apply to our students that are current ninth graders. They would continue all the way through with four years of Latin offered to them. But that, starting next year, our eighth graders would be aware of the fact that Latin would be offered Latin I and Latin II, which meets the requirements for the mass core as advised by the college system in Massachusetts for them to receive two years. It would not cut out the Latin electives, which are currently Latin for medical terminology and Latin for law and government. Those electives will stay as long as students choose to enroll in those electives. They are also based on student enrollment. But what we're seeing is less interest in the upper levels. And I think an emphasis or a recommendation from our group that going with the spoken language is something that's very valuable to students today. So... That's our recommendation.
So, if I, so this was the one that I almost didn't want to move out of sub, because I completely disagree. Like, numbers-wise, you look at it, there are more kids taking Latin than French. I don't want to cut out either language. I think it's important, you know, it's, it's important to offer courses, so I think taking away, even if it is, you know, small, it's still more than French. I, I don't know, I just have a real hard time. It was already taken out of the middle school, taking the upper levels, I have a strong, I think it needs to be left into the, if, if the student enrollment completely disappears, that's one thing, but, you know, the kids already aren't able to take the AP Latin because since it's not offered in the middle school anymore. But, I mean, if you look at, I have another sheet, but there was at least 20 or so more kids that take Latin than French right now. So I, I, I just disagree, I guess, a little bit with the going by just straight numbers. I guess there are 56 kids taking Latin and 29 in French.
Right, but of the 56 taking Latin, 48 of them are in Latin I, Latin II, right? So there's seven kids in Latin III, there's four kids in Latin IV.
But the same can be said for French.
But that's not including honors, right?
It is, it's together. So Latin III honors, Latin III.
But we can say the same, there's still.
Latin III, six, and then the Latin III honors, 24.
Nope.
They're in the wrong year. Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, okay.
I think, you know, as a community, we phased Latin out of the middle school.
Much to some objection, but.
Six years ago.
But was that budget-related or was that?
No, that was student enrollment-related, which is the same place we're at now at the high school, right? Is that there, we're running really small courses in the world languages. You know, if we set the threshold to, you know, 10 students needing to be enrolled, we wouldn't be running any Latin. Yeah, I, I just think that we are using resources for an area of study that students aren't necessarily selecting any longer. I do think, you know, being a three-language high school, and currently we are a four-language high school, but being a three-language high school is something that we are absolutely committed to, and that's why I think that the proposal isn't to phase out Latin entirely. We talked a lot at EdSub that some of our students, the language-based difficulties find themselves in Latin because it isn't a spoken language. We want to make sure there's still the opportunity for them to get two years of world language at the high school. That's why Latin I, Latin II would remain, as well as the electives that we talked about. But it's just, and in efficiency-wise, can we continue to run courses that are this small? Is it the best use of our resources?
Can I?
Is there another language we should be looking at? Is there, we've talked a lot about American Sign Language, it's very difficult to find.
But that doesn't count for the college.
It doesn't, but we don't have a world language requirement, right?
Colleges don't recognize that.
They do not, no.
That's the downside of that.
Are we going toward requiring world language?
Well, so when we talked about requiring world language five years ago, was the last time it was in EdSub, I think, you know, we looked at the percentage of our students that were already taking two years' worth of language, and then the kids that were left. And does creating a world language requirement, is that just creating a waiver system for the kids that are left? Because they would never be able to get two years of language, depending upon some of the special education pieces associated with them, as well as a whole host of other issues. At the time, it was 80% of students that were taking the two years. There's now 64% of high school students are enrolled in two years of language. I think by, I, I think that the kind of conversation that we had is, this is a step towards that. We're not making the recommendation to change the graduation requirement at this time, but I could see that coming forward in subsequent years.
So, let me just ask, so if we are going to move toward that direction, wouldn't it make sense to then keep maybe Latin III and IV, but combine them, like maybe make them honors classes only? Because honestly, if somebody's going into Latin III, they're a lot more serious about Latin than, you know, and then that way, maybe you'll combine the numbers and see what happens. We might have to.
That's, that's what they do for at least Latin II, it's a combo class.
Latin III is also a combo class.
It's already.
It's not two and three or three and four, they're separate.
They're separate, it's just the honors are in with them.
You couldn't put Latin III and Latin IV together.
Okay.
But Latin III and Latin CP and honors are together.
Correct.
I mean, what, what would it look like to keep it for another year? I'm just thinking around the idea of like us needing to eventually require two years of language, and wouldn't it be nice to keep that option for Latin available?
But that is available, so you, everybody starts Latin at the high school in Latin I. You don't come out of the middle school in Latin. So to get two years of Latin, all we would be offering is Latin I, Latin II.
I just think it's a, you know, I am a proponent of teaching the class, because I think that, you know, a lot of our languages, if you go off to college and you want to learn another language, you know, if you've taken Latin, you've already, you know, I mean, that, it's such a base language.
We were actually just talking about this before the meeting, and just how pedagogy has changed just in English classes, and a lot of the roots of words and prefixes and suffixes, so much more of that is covered in ELA than ever was before. So that's, it's not eliminating it from the curriculum.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I, I do still think there's a need for it. Like, I still see students wanting to take it. You know, I was actually one of the people who was really sad to see it leave the middle school because I feel like it's such a, an important language. I, I think it's important for a lot of other reasons, and, you know, again, like, I know it's covered in ELA, but it, it helps so much in college, and in college, you can go learn a different language if you want, or you can continue on Latin or.
Right, and I think that what's important to just point out is that the languages are just different than electives, right? Because if we had an elective that only had seven students in it, we wouldn't run it. It's a year-long course, it's, you know, 20% of a teacher's day is devoted to teaching seven students. You know, if, if you're talking about a two-year language requirement, then anything beyond the two years would be an elective. And so our philosophy has always been, when we offer something, we offer the full gamut of it. It would, I think, beg the question of, then, do we treat Latin as an elective? And if less than six kids enroll in, or whatever the number is, the magic number, enroll in Latin III, then we don't run it. And maybe it doesn't run every year. Maybe it, maybe it runs every other if there's a strong Latin I, Latin II number, I don't.
It's tough because, to Alison's point, French is the same issue. Like, there's.
Right, but we committed to French, right, in seventh grade? So we've committed to offering French and Spanish at the middle school. It'd be very difficult to offer French and Spanish at the middle school and offer Spanish and Latin at the high school.
So, but I, I, look, I, I remember when we eliminated it in middle school, I was against it, so.
Definitely against the French.
Completely, I was very much against eliminating the French also. I, I think it's, this is a sort of, it's steps, right? So we eliminated Latin in middle school, now we're talking about Latin III and IV. Next time we're talking about just eliminating Latin, right? It's, and, and while I do think some things need to be student-driven and student-led, I also think, sort of as the adults, we have to be able to say, hey, this is important, right? This is important for, and granted, pedagogy has changed, I mean, you've convinced me of that, I got it, but it's important for vocabulary, it's important for moving onward, it's important as you begin to grasp other languages, whether it be in university or somewhere else. You know, if, and if we're going to make language a requirement, I agree, I would not want to see Latin ever be completely taken out of the program of studies because candidly, the kids that are really going to struggle speaking another language and going through it can actually learn another piece of history, can learn another piece of culture, you know, there, there is a lot that you get exposed to. I think the, the ultimate question is, is a dead romance language just as important as a spoken romance language? Is really what we're talking about here. Arabic is high, not a romance language, but I, I think it's, at the end of the day, that, that's really what we're talking about. And yes, well, in some of the upper-level Latin classes, the enrollment may be down. I've seen us run classes with six kids in it because it was an AP class, and it was something that we committed to, you know, with those kids, and we weren't just going to end or, or take that away. I think if you have a Latin I and Latin II, and then say that's as far as you're going to go, I guarantee you in three years, we're going to be, unless you make it a requirement, we're going to be having the conversation of, well, no one's taking Latin I or Latin II, because there's nowhere else for them.
But I wonder if you do Latin I and Latin II, and then say anything beyond Latin II is, is treated like an elective, right? So you, as a committee, are committing to Latin I and Latin II as the pipeline, but if there's 14 kids that want to move on to Latin III, we still would list it in the program of study, and if we select that, we would run it. But unlike the commitment to the full breadth of all the way through AP, we would treat Latin as an elective after Latin.
So, let me, let me ask you this question then. What if, what if eight kids want to take French III? Are you going to run it?
So, French and Spanish, the language that we've committed from seventh grade through AP as a district, that's, we don't have AP Latin anymore, we don't offer that because you can't physically get there because we don't have Latin I covered.
One thing, one thing I look at, Patrick, is if you look at the pathways and electives that kids could take in pathways, and each of the pathways, one of the electives is a world language. To me, that doesn't really make a ton of sense. Like, why does a kid who wants to, you know, be in the biomedical field want to have to take a foreign language? It's because obviously, in this world now, if a kid knows two languages, or someone knows two languages, that they're a lot more in demand. But if that second language is Latin, it's kind of, you know, kind of, to me, it sort of defeats the purpose of that.
Well, that's true of the biomedical field, where the derivatives of Latin are.
Yeah, but they have classes for that, though. My wife is a lawyer, never took Latin.
But we also offer Latin for medical terminology and Latin for law, right?
And also, taking classes away, like, and I realize this would be not for the current high school students, but, you know, if we want kids to have like a well, like a good transcript full of classes, and they want to take, you know, four years of a language, I don't know, like, because like, for instance, there's not, and I realize why, but we don't even teach French I.
What we do?
I mean, in, in high school, in high school. We don't teach French I in high school. There's no French I this year.
This year we're not.
So like, if a kid, and it is, so there is a Spanish I this year. So like, I'm just curious, like, if a kid, you know, out of, I, I don't know, I just, I, I, there's.
Right, so we do have middle school students that aren't able to take a language at the middle school, which is why ninth graders are first opportunities. So there's, in most years, there's a French I, there just wasn't.
And I, and I definitely don't like the idea of having, like, Latin be considered an elective, but the other ones not, like, enrollment-wise, so like, I will, I will vote no.
Yeah, no, I just was thinking of ideas.
Patrick is right, that'll eventually just die out if it's an elective.
It will, I think, I, I don't agree that, about taking it out of the middle school either. Like, I think we should have had it in the middle school, so, I know it's hard, but like, I look at the result. The result is, a lot of people, we don't have AP anymore, and a lot of kids are, you know, like, dying out in like 11th and 12th grade. Similar things happen with music, we took, you know, we still have it, but, you know, chorus at the middle school level is now ouch, you can only do it during Titan time, and interestingly enough, we don't have the numbers that we used to have. Enrollments come down too, so that's played a factor, but I feel like there's a correlation.
As much as this is an education conversation, it has a budget piece to it. You, you just can't continue to offer the same number of courses with 300 less kids and not make any changes, right? There's, and that's, that was the catalyst for the conversation at the middle school, was that the middle school enrollment was under 400 kids. It doesn't make sense to spread them out over three languages. What makes the most sense to, to, to put them in a pipeline?
And then what can, what, out of the languages, what languages provide the most value for kids going forward? I guess is what you got to think about. To me, I don't, I don't think Latin provides a value.
I don't think that's for us, though.
Right, I think our students that are anxious about speaking in a world language absolutely find their way to Latin, and I think that we still need to have that for them. You know, I don't foresee two years from now saying, let's eliminate Latin entirely, but you all are committed to being a three-language high school, so coming back to you and saying, let's eliminate Latin entirely, your job is to say to me, then what are you proposing in its place, right? Because we are, that's the education.
Then what are you proposing in its place?
Well, right now, we have Arabic, but, but keeping Latin.
But there's only one.
But keeping Latin I and II keeps that language in our high school, so we're still a three-language high school. If we were going to eliminate a Latin entirely, then we would be coming to you with a proposal for Mandarin Chinese, or German, or something else.
I'd rather see us get rid of Arabic because it doesn't.
Arabic is going to feed, feed itself out, because right now, Arabic is just an elective.
And it's one, and it's one level right now, right? We don't have, there's only Arabic II honors right now.
Right, so there's Arabic I and Arabic II honors.
So we have seven students total taking Arabic right now.
Yes.
And last year, and last year, there was nine. So two kids dropped out.
Or moved, I mean, they don't.
Yeah, yeah, aren't taking it this year.
Because it's purely just an elective.
Adding, so just looking at the, like, AP Latin and AP French, which I, you know, Latin, there's one student taking it this year. But if you look at overall, we've had 23 kids taking AP French and 26 taking AP Latin. Like, I, I, the numbers, I mean, I realize this.
Can you say that again? What are those numbers?
So I'm looking at the numbers, 20, if you don't include this year, for, because there's no AP Latin comparison.
She's saying from 2019 to now.
So based on the thing, there's 23 AP French kids from 19 to last year, and there's 20, in that same time period, there was 26 AP. I don't know, I just, looking at the numbers.
But you can't get to AP Latin with our structure now, so I wouldn't necessarily use that.
But I know, but I'm, I'm just looking at like, when you look at, and there's, you know, this, the, the years, we're missing a year of AP Spanish, you guys must, did we not run it one year? There's 28. So, I, I don't know, the numbers, I feel like, are there for Latin. I will not support taking it.
Right, but just to clarify, we do not offer AP Latin.
No, no, I understand.
Comparing AP French to AP Latin to AP Spanish.
I'm just saying, like, even though it was taken out of the middle school, I think that might not have been the right decision, looking at what we have, like, the outcome of how many kids took AP classes. Like, and, you know, now, this year, we have one who's doing it. I'm assuming that means they're taking it as a independent study, because I don't think we offer it one. So I don't know, I just.
They're taking it as a.
Yeah, so I just, looking at the numbers, I feel like the student, if we're looking at, they are low, but we are a, we don't require language, we are a small district to begin with. You know, there's 100 and something, under 200 kids per grade level. Like, I mean, I do think the numbers are small, but that's just the reality of our district.
Right, I don't think there's a lot of high schools the size of ours that are offering three languages. David, I'd really like to hear your voice.
Yeah, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm sitting here kind of beating my head against the wall. With total respect for all your opinions, the difference is every now and then you have to look at, okay, we're the Pembroke School Committee. There are tough decisions to be made, and some of it is based on economics. We all have our personal feeling. We like Latin, we like French, we like whatever the thing is. If you honestly look at this, the numbers don't support it. It's not supporting Arabic, it's basically not supporting French, and it's basically not supporting Latin. Do we find a third thing, German, Italian, Mandarin, whatever it happens to be? I don't know. And again, that comes down to staffing and all that type of stuff, but I tell people, and I know it sounds crazy to use this kind of a simplification, in my business, if something doesn't move on the menu, you take it off the menu, no matter how much someone, people, how much someone, people, oh, I love to have it, every time I want to have it. The sales don't show it. You know what I'm saying? So then you sit there and say, what we do is we offer LTOs, limited time opportunities, and you put something out there and say, let's see if they like this, let's see if they like that. And if people take the LTO, then you sit there and say, okay, we'll put that on the menu. Right now, and I use this as an oversimplification, we have failing menu items. Six people are eating what's on the menu, or, you know, five people are eating what's on the menu. That does not work in a school of four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred, middle school, high school. What we're doing isn't working. I understand Latin. I think it's fantastic. You know, you, you learn the history of words and a lot of the history of language. But if you look at this honestly, take, you know, your kid took this class or your kid took this class, sit back, pull yourself out and say, would you really teach a class for four or five kids? Is it economically a good decision for the people of Pembroke? Are we spending our money our best way? And again, you might be a little personal angry, but if you look at it and say, we have to do what's best, you know, for the citizens of Pembroke, for the kids in the school, for the administration, and make best use of their time. Teaching a class for four kids in it is not the best use of their time. And I think if you look at these numbers, they're going in the wrong direction. You know what I'm saying? So that's kind of how I would put it. And again, maybe it's an oversimplification, and I'm not trying to kill the messenger. And I think everybody makes very strong, valid arguments. I think it's a great discussion, but I think if you look at, again, the economics of it, we're doing something wrong.
And just going by that, just to counter it a little bit, if you look at our Latin one numbers, they're going up. Latin two...
Right, but they're going up with ninth graders. Those are our students that weren't able to take a language at the middle school.
Yeah. Again, I'll be honest with you, I would, I would take, I would take Latin out, I would take French out. You know, have a backup game plan. What do we try? Again, Italian, German, Mandarin, you know, whatever, you know, language it happens to be.
Well, I'd take out Arabic before I take out French. Arabic is going to take itself out.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That's not going to exist. It's an elective.
But, but here's the thing...
But we also made a conscious decision to move our world language content supervisor to the middle school to teach French, right? So those of you that have been tuned into this world language conversation for the past decade, it is staff and personality-dependent. There was many years at the middle school where there was a rotating of who was teaching French, who was teaching Latin. It didn't get any momentum with kids. And so, you know, by, by moving civvies, taking probably, you know, our most valuable French teacher and putting them at the middle school to gain some excitement for taking French, I do think you're going to see a change in those numbers as you move forward. I think kids in the middle school are really enjoying French. And I do think you, you know, administratively, I want to give that a year or two to play itself out. I want to see how many eighth graders continue with French two next year.
You had a statistic, Erin, that should worry all of us, right? And that was, I think, you know, four, five, six years ago. The number of kids was eighty percent. Today, it was sixty-four percent.
Taking two years, right? So taking, what would be their volume, just two years, which you can get with Latin one and two, French one and two.
But I think that in and of itself is really worrisome, right? I mean, we are in a, a more global community, and to your point, Mike, right, knowing a second language is incredibly important. Ironically, I actually thought, teaching Arabic, I thought was pretty cutting-edge, and especially in today's world. I, I don't think that's a bad thing at all. I think having a Chinese class, we talked about this years ago, could be really beneficial. I do, and I always have thought German was right, but I do think there is a dollars and cents component to this, right? We're going to be talking about the budget, and it may be that we're not going to have a choice, right? Because when we're making reduction discussions, a huge piece of that is enrollment-driven reductions that none of us want to get there, but we ultimately have to get there. I'm a champion of Latin myself, I've already said it, but I do think there is a dollars and cents component to this that we may be forced to consider. I also think we need to be very careful about limiting language options for kids because I think it is critically important to preparing them to live in this world.
Well, at this point, it's like, I feel like we're really divided on this.
It's a first read, right? And so I'm happy to come back to you and share with you what area high schools are offering for languages. I think that would be helpful for you to see.
Yeah, I'd like to hear some, some other languages as well.
I think, in a formal spreadsheet, Ellen.
I know. I did, I did do this.
I'd be interested in finding, I know someone mentioned American Sign Language. I mean, I'm sure trying to find someone to teach that's probably hard enough, but I'd be real interested, especially with everything going on now, that, that, you know, being proactive to some of these things. And it's funny, my daughter does it, and I would probably give her a B level in doing it, and the last two job opportunities she had, people were fascinated that she was able to sign. They thought that was amazing.
My sister was able to take it in her high school. My brother's, it's an awesome thing to, to be able to do. So I, I just...
I think it's a great idea, too. I, I hope kids would take it if we, if we were to offer it.
I think they would take it. I, I think just to dose you with a little bit of reality, it's really hard to find a certified teacher to do that.
Plus, when you're on a rotating drop schedule, it doesn't, so...
And it doesn't...
It doesn't lend itself.
Right, in Hanover, they have sign language, the teacher teaches block one only, right? Just period one, always, every day.
I would love to take it, so I'm huge. But if it's a dollars and cents thing, then why would we do that as opposed to Latin, which we already have, and it's not necessarily proving to, like, I mean...
So, because I looked it up. So Duxbury does ASL French, Spanish, Latin, Mandarin. Hanover does ASL French, Spanish. Silver Lake does French, Spanish, Latin. Situate does French, Spanish, Mandarin slash Chinese. So that's at least what I looked up, just...
Right, and we'll put together that for you, what you guys will look for. Mandarin Chinese is a tough one. They don't recommend that you start that at the high school level.
They recommend you start it like in fifth grade, so...
Yeah, which is a whole other conversation for a different day.
Yeah, and we talked about that as, as part of the budget process the past couple of years, as there's some kind of world language orbit, for lack of a better word, that elementary student should be going through.
Yes, absolutely.
So these are first reads on top of anything else you suggested tonight. And if you think of anything else of the data point that you'd like to see before you take it as a second read and either approve or disapprove of it, just let Mary Bethra know, and we'll pull the information together for you guys.
So, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so we have to move to accept the first read.
As a first read, yeah.
So do we accept it with changes? Like, we, we talked about changing the street law at tenth grade as well, or...
Yeah, you can, that's, as a, it will come back with the second read, with the edits.
It'll come back regardless of how we vote for it right now.
That's the only edit that you all need.
Okay.
I'm happy to note that edit, ten, got it.
Thank you. So the second read will have some edits?
The, the second read will have just the street law being gate grades ten through twelve.
And then we're going to look at other schools, and it doesn't mean it's being passed?
You can suggest edits at the second read time.
I would, I would just take that whole column out, or the whole line out for Latin.
I know.
That would be my suggestion for us.
When we, when you, after you guys researched the, what the other schools are doing for languages, now, does that go back to education sub meeting or will it come back up here?
No, it will come to you as part of your packet as, for your second read.
And we'll have another robust conversation about whether or not we want to move it forward. But then I guess the question is, like, let's suppose we decide for one reason or another that we want to take that out and keep Latin.
You'll vote separately at each thing.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to have to vote on one document.
No, no, no. This is just a summary of the changes.
Okay, all right, great. So, do we have a motion to approve this as a first read, the twenty-four, twenty-five PHS Program of Studies revisions?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the ayes have it.
Do we need the new courses too, or is that all in it?
We already did that, we did that first.
No, it wasn't. It's been a long discussion.
It was, it's been, yeah.
I just don't want to miss it.
The last thing in your packet is section G. We are back to the sections from the policy manual. So it's section G for the first read. Section G is personnel. I gave you just a summary sheet of our current policy manual and what the recommendations from policies have were, and then the whole host of new policies that we are recommending, again, as a first read.
Can I ask about a suggestion on maybe adding a policy, since this is about personnel? And this is something the policies have would have to have a conversation about?
We're meeting on the eleven.
I'm not even sure, by the way, we can do this, so I'll just say that. But can we talk about address code for staff?
Sure, can you talk about it? So, that's not necessarily a policy. That's a change in working conditions that would happen.
So is that, so that would have to be bargained?
Yes, yep.
So, that's much more difficult to do.
Right. But we do have our, some of our units are up for negotiation now, and our larger unit is up for negotiation.
I just think stress is the professional nature of the environment and dress relates to that. Every business has something like that. I, I don't know that, well, I'll let it go there, because it would have to be a half bargain, but...
All right, so does anybody have any questions about section G?
Right, just a first read.
It's a first read, all right. Is there a motion to have this policy, section G, recode, revise, rescind as a first read?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it.
And then just check the mailbox, there's nothing in SCFO mailbox.
All right, no emails, and...